Good morning, and we'd like to welcome you to the council time for Clark County Council. This is Wednesday, March 16th. It is 9:00 a.m. And let's begin with old business. We would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes of March 9.
Chair, I have a correction to the minutes.
On the minutes themselves?
Yes.
Okay.
The minutes show that I was present. I was actually out on a previously noticed absence.
Alrighty. If staff will make that correction, thank you. And is there a motion for approval with that correction?
Still moved.
Second?
Go ahead and second, I take it that Ms. Olsen is also not going to be present today. We're down to the three councillors.
I believe that is correct, and will be for all of this week and I believe next week as well.
Thank you.
So, all those in favor of passing those minutes of March 9 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are passed. We now turn to item 1.2, which is the 1406 sales tax funding that we heard a bit about. Was that last week or the week before? At any rate, we've had a nice briefing on that, but we need to carry that further. So Vanessa and Lindsay, if you would please share with us your background information on that now.
Sure. So, this is Lindsay. I'll go ahead and start and then turn it over to Vanessa and Roy. We have Roy Johnson with the Vancouver Housing Authority here as well. So, the only thing before the council is the 1406 funds today. Just to clarify, when Roy and Vanessa had come before, we had talked about some, you know, capital projects and potentially, you know, what would we look at in terms of bonding and kind of a number of ideas were brought forward. And so we're splitting those out. And the 1033 mental health sales tax funds, whether those are done as part of the RFP process for an ongoing operational expense that will happen as part of the RFP process, potentially using a lump sum of these funds for a capital project for the Vancouver Housing Authority. Again, that will come forward as a separate request sometime in the future. So, the question before the council today is whether the council wants to place on a future agenda, the April, well, I'm looking at the calendar, the April 5th agenda for formal approval, to continue the pass-through of the county's 1406 affordable housing funds to the Vancouver Housing Authority through the end of December 2023. So that's what the request is. We currently pass through those funds to the VHA, and they're requesting that we continue to pass through those funds this year and through the end of 2023. So I'll let Vanessa and Roy talk about kind of specifically what they anticipate using those funds for. But I've spoken to both of them and they're fine to come back and do an annual report in the early part of, you know, 2023 and 2024 to give the council an update on what those funds actually were used for. So at this point, they're just projecting, hey, this is, you know, if you continue to pass through the funds, this is what we would anticipate using those funds for.
Good morning. Kathleen, were you going to talk about the, their request to look at bonding or ongoing?
I can.
Yeah. Did I first? Okay.
Yeah, and I did, I believe I talked to council about this during one-on-ones and Lindsay may have well, as well. So both Lindsay and Vanessa joined me with the finance team to talk about the bonding of financial options. It is the recommendation from the finance team to, there's a lot of administrative hurdles with bonding. And we also looked at ARPA funding as well as other funding options that the council could consider. The finance team would recommend the council consider mental health sales tax funding. It does have a healthy fund balance right now. That's more restrictive actually than the ARPA funding. And if it's a capital request, if the council wants to consider a one-time capital request, that could be done outside of the normal RFP process that they use for mental health sales tax. If it's for an ongoing program, then that would be recommended to go through the RFP process for the mental health sales tax. And then also for the, I'm just touching based on the 1406 funding. I believe I hear the requests for this year and next year. There was a question about ongoing funding support from 1406 funding, and it is recommended to look at that as a, possibly a one-year approval or a two-year approval. For a couple of reasons. One, we have to be mindful about committing future councils. And secondly, this does, and also looking at a first right of refusal, where VHA could return to the council, talk about what they've spent it on and their plans moving forward. So there would be that continual conversation annually for the council's review. Vanessa or Lindsay, is there anything I missed from that conversation?
Nope, I think you summarized it well.
Thank you.
So I'll just introduce and then see if Roy would like to speak. So at the last time we came forward, he had a request for 2022 to use the 1406 funds to support the Tenny Creek project. And then it was recommended that by the finance team, if he had another proposal for 2023, to bring it forth today. And that is where he's bringing back the Weaver Creek Battleground project for funding for the 2023. So Roy, do you want to add something to, to discuss the Weaver Creek Battleground project?
And Roy, it does look like you're muted right now, so we can't hear you.
I come across much better when it's just lip. Good morning, Chair Bowerman and councillors. I appreciate the opportunity to return. So, a pointed clarification for 2022, we do want the first use to go to Tenny Creek, but if there's some residual, we'd like to continue to use that for Weaver Creek. And then for 2023, we're asking for 100% to be used for Weaver Creek because that would, at that point, be into construction. We're supposed to hear this week as to whether we are receiving the state housing trust fund for Weaver Creek, so that will give it a great boost, but this is where we would ask for the, the funding for part of the 22 funds as well as all of 23 funds. And this is the same that I provided last time I spoke. And if you could go to the next slide, it does have what our full budget is. And if not, that's fine too. There we go. So we're looking at it close to a $30 million budget, and we are still, we're working on trying to bring that down with contractors doing a review of it. But we are hopeful that we're closing on it at the end of this year and start construction in 2023. But it will be a great boost over in the battleground area to get some additional affordable housing. So that would be my request for 23, and I appreciate it.
Add, otherwise, is there anything to add staff? Because otherwise, we probably will have some questions.
I just also want to acknowledge the legislative session has ended, and that was discussed at the last meeting. Funding that the state has made available for whether it's homelessness or affordable housing. And so Lindsay did a really good wrap-up, and so there is about 45 million available to local governments and nonprofits to help transition people that are unhoused, that are on, residing on state-owned rights away to housing opportunities. There is another 25 million through the Medicaid program that is meant for support services to help people with permanent supportive housing and community support. There's also 300 million for rapid acquisition housing, and then 114.5 million for housing trust fund. Now, usually what happens with that is they do tend to make that competitive because they make it across the state. And so we have been able to tap, especially the housing trust fund, VHA, and a lot of our local nonprofit housing developers have been able to access that. But what have benefits is if we're able to put local dollars into it to make it competitive. And so that's why these type of requests are very important, because if they're going to go after any of this money, they could see a local commitment that makes us, our proposals look much stronger, so.
To clarify for the council, that local commitment wouldn't need to be a separate lump sum funding. We could use our 1406 pass-through as evidence of that local commitment. And so the VHA would be able to say in their housing trust fund application that they receive the 1406 funds from the county, and that would be a local county contribution towards the project.
That's true. If I could add also that I think this application, we have home fund app requests pending with the county too. So both of those sources really are a boost when we're demonstrating to the state.
Is it, again, the $600,000 pass-through that you are requesting for 2022?
2022 and 2023.
Well, I'm focused first on 2022.
I believe that I was told that the amount actually this year is, is close to 800,000 because of the sales tax collection. And so hopefully that would be about the same for 23.
So you're, you're requesting 800,000 as a pass-through for 2022?
If, if that's what they have calculated as being available, I'm asking for 100%, yes.
Okay, got it. And Kathleen, how, what is 100% in dollars?
I believe it's, it's about 750,000, but that is estimated because it does fluctuate based on the tax. So I think as the council did last year, the estimated amount was 600,000, but it was the full amount that was passed through. So it probably would make sense that it would be noting 100% pass-through if that's what the council wishes to do, knowing that that amount could change as we move throughout the year. Or if you want to put a cap on it, you can certainly do that as well.
And Kathleen, you commented on maybe not wanting to commit future councils. Is that with regard to 2023?
No, it's, it's really, I mean, it could be. I don't think there is as much of a concern of doing just a, a one or a two-year. I think the, just a blanket ongoing approval was the concern or the, the way we want to make sure that we're mindful on. But I don't think a two-year commitment would have that issue, but of course, that is also up to the council.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Questions from the council?
So I think you've pretty much touched, Madam Chair, on the question, same exact questions I had. I, I understand that we have the entirety 100% available on 14601 funds. I understand the concern or the issue with binding future councils. However, we don't have that authority. So if we were to even state our intent to do it every year for the next 10 years, we could state that and vote it in today, and then if there's a new council, they could certainly take the subject up and change. Obviously, that wouldn't be very helpful to the Vancouver Housing Authority because they wouldn't be able to plan on it, or their funding that they would get every year could be then in jeopardy for the, for the next year. I don't see it as a big issue, and I would, I would really agree with what Kathleen last said. It is not an issue for 2022 or 2023. I, I really don't have questions. I just have comments. And the first is, you know, I am concerned that we only have barely a quorum again, and I, I'm hoping we have unanimity on this. Otherwise, we're not going to get much business done. The Vancouver Housing Authority is doing great work in the community. They're a perfect partner in what we're all trying to achieve here. So I strongly favor 100% funding of these 14601 funds for 2022 as well as 2023. You know, we'll reconsider everything. We'll see how our tax funds are coming in in future years. But I, but I think the Vancouver Housing Authority would appreciate at least a specific commitment to 2022 and 2023 so that they can, you know, have their books reconciled. So those are.
Was that a motion, councillor?
I'm sorry?
Was that a motion, councillor?
I, I can make that motion. I didn't know if there was more discussion, but I'll make a motion to approve.
We can have more discussion. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Further discussion?
Chair.
Councillor Lenz?
Yeah, no, Roy, thanks for this, and thanks, staff, for the additional and continued information. These are good projects. I'm very supportive of committing the 2022 and 2023 funds to move and actually start doing some work in the community, which we've been needing to do for some time. I also think that we should do a, you know, write, write a first refusal to revisit at that time. And we'll just make a request that we strategically plan for when that revisiting should be so that the conversation happens in time for whatever commitments might be needed for 2024. I don't know when that would be, but just knowing that there are deadlines for requesting other funding and that sort of thing, that if this is where this goes, that we sort of flag that so that we make sure that we have productive conversations in time for the money to continue to be useful.
Further questions or discussion? I heard a, a bit of wavering on the year that there would be a report coming to council on how the funds were used. Could we commit to a specific year?
So the intent would be that the VHA would come back in the early part of the following year. So in 2023, they would come and report on the use of the 2022 funds. And then in early 2024, they would report on the use of the 2023 funds. So I would anticipate it would be sometime in January or early February, and we'd find a date that works for the council and the VHA.
Excellent.
Yeah, and another option, council, too, while I agree with Lindsay there, you could actually have a report out in December so that there's not an interruption in funding and that that is solidified before the beginning of the year. So they're not pausing programs or something, waiting for that update and potential future commitment.
So that would be December of 2022. Does that sound acceptable to you, Roy, to get that together at that point?
Absolutely. I'll come every week if you like me, too.
Well, we'd like you to be here with us, Roy, bud.
All right.
Is there any further discussion? The motion before us is to use the 1406 sales tax funding in full, 100% as a pass-through for VHA for 2022 and 2023 with a report on fund, oh, that wasn't a part of the motion. That was my afterthought on when the report comes. So that is the motion before us. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is passed unanimously. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Is there any new business?
There is no new business today.
And how about councillor reports?
I have one.
Councillor Medjig?
And, and I, and I know you attended. So, but I think it's important to kind of get the pulse of the rest of the council. Unfortunately, we can't get the entirety of the council, but at least I'd like to hear councillor Lenz's thoughts on this. Some brief background, you know, since becoming a councillor in District 4, the most rural, which has now changed somewhat, I had been hearing from constituents and, and seeing firsthand that broadband access, cable access was lacking in a lot of areas, you know, primarily in the Amboi Yacult area, out in the hinterlands of the county. But also then Camas, Washougal, Battleground, you know, other people in more urban settings were having trouble. They couldn't get any interest from cable companies to come and service because there just weren't enough customers to make it pencil out. Then the pandemic hit. Then we started, it was really in our face, you know, schoolchildren at home trying to connect and do their homework, have classes, they couldn't do it. You know, they had to set up some temporary hotspots and school buses and, and random parking lots. And that was a field expedient that worked a little bit, but very problematic for our children throughout the rural Clark County area. And then everyone trying to work remotely, it was impossible for a, a number of my constituents and former constituents to do so, losing connection if they even had one to begin with. So to make a long story short, I've been doing everything to try to find money to get broadband access from DNR to federal to state monies. We need to roll it out. It's great for economic development wherever, wherever located to know because it attracts business and it certainly makes for a higher quality of life and the ability to work remotely if we can expand the network out there. I've met with some of the providers and, and there is increasing interest. You know, our, our utilities weren't interested in expanding into cable and broadband infrastructure, but we just met with Comcast, and they had put, they were prepared, and we had supported an area northeast of Battleground, about 500 homes. They put in for a grant, but they weren't selected, and it was mainly on the issue of access, open access to their cable after a certain number of years that is not normally accepted in the industry because it is a competitive industry. So they did not get that grant. And then the two things I want to add to that is they now have a director at the state lever, level who is very savvy in the cable business. And so the open access requirement is most likely going to drop because it is not normal in the industry. So they will be competitive in the future. They do have other areas in the county they are ready to expand into. Now regarding the 500 homes in northeast of Battleground, they still have their share, and they had boosted more than they needed, hoping to be more competitive for the grant that they didn't get. So what they're proposing and what I am supporting and want to see if we do have support is to use ARPA funding or other funding to become a partner, public-private partnership with Comcast and other providers, should they propose other projects. They're looking for about 1.5 million dollars, and then they already have pretty much, I think the total amount is 2.9 million for the, for this infrastructure to be put in place. So it would be about 1.5 million for us. They already have a franchise agreement with the county, so that's not a hurdle. And so I'm hoping to see that we do have support because we do have a window of opportunity here between federal, state, and other grant money besides the ARPA money to expand this infrastructure throughout the county where it needs to be placed. So that's kind of my report. I'm sorry that Julie's not here. I'm sorry that we don't have all five councillors here. But I, I want to see that at least if we've got three supporting these public-private partnerships that we could strongly encourage.
Any comments on Gary's report?
I think that we definitely do need to increase internet service throughout the county. But in, in that area as well, I know that it's very spotty. I think this is an interesting proposal. I'd like to actually see a proposal. I'd like to actually hear from the, the, you know, the applicant and from the city of Battleground. And just, you know, I'd like to actually have a little more to, to go on. But I think this would be, you know, potentially an appropriate use and be able to, to do some good work with those funds, so.
So I, I think that's perfect. So just to let you know, and I don't know if Lindsay is on, she was going to basically prepare the staff report, and Comcast was going to show us their, their project proposal. So I, I think exactly what you're asking is now being prepared.
So what I will be doing, councillor Medjig asked Comcast to put together kind of a proposal, and I offered to Comcast to put that in a format that would be something that the council could consider and councillor Medjig could bring up at a future council time to see if that's something that we would want to do. So I would, you know, do that internal work and working with Kathleen and finance and any of those other things that we would need to be doing to bring that forward. So yes, I'm waiting for that kind of information from Comcast, what exactly would they be asking us for? And then working with Kathleen and the finance team and other staff to figure out, okay, what, what would the council need to take action on this?
Great. I look forward to seeing that. You know, unrelated to this specific proposal, but also just to talk about cable in general and, and internet. Something that the city of Vancouver negotiated with C-Trans when putting in the bus rapid transit for Mill Plain was that since they were going to be ripping up a lot of the, the, the road going basically across the extent of the city of Vancouver, they worked out an agreement to put fibre down while doing the, the Mill Plain BRT project. And that is also under discussion. The, the next BRT project is going to go up Highway 99, probably as far as Salmon Creek with eventual extension perhaps as far as 179th. And I think there is discussion as well of, as, of, of including that and trying that. So the county will also have an opportunity to engage in some of those conversations when the BRT crosses city-county lines. But that is, I think, was an innovative way to look at, or, you know, thinking forward about connectivity. And, you know, we have some projects, including the 179th corridor, that that might be an interesting conversation to have as well about laying some of the infrastructure needed to help increase more of the access throughout our community.
So this is all good discussion. I want to add two other things. That one Kathleen had sent out, the manager had sent out pretty much a notice to all the known service providers. So it wasn't just a focus on Comcast. We were trying to generate industry interest generally throughout the county. And then over the last couple of years, even before the pandemic, I had been working with Public Works to do exactly what councillor Lenz had just said. You know, they were trying to give priorities for right-of-way and permitting for any company that wanted to get the cable in. So I think Public Works is very mindful of the priority of it. And I was told at least that they were doing everything they could to prioritize that future thinking when roads are ripped up. But I, but I would share that at the time we tee this up for council time and discuss it, I think it would be good to have Public Works involved in permitting just to make sure we do have that priority set and that they are forward-thinking just in the way that councillor Lenz suggested that the Vancouver had done with, with C-Trans.
Are there other councillor reports? Let's move to work session requests. Was the discussion that we just had something that would be an appropriate work session request for the future?
I think we can, just being mindful of all the other work sessions that we have scheduled, I think we can do this as a council time agenda, but if it seems to be greater than that, then we can look at a work session request for that.
Are there other work session requests today?
Not today, thanks.
Okay. Lindsay, do you have a report on policy?
Just one quick thing. So I know that there's been some discussion regarding the city of Vancouver and receiving the, the earmark within the recently adopted congressional budget for body camera funding. And I received today some information from Senator Murray's office regarding future requests for congressionally-directed funding, or congressionally-directed funding. So I will be talking to the councillors in my one-on-ones about that, and then we can bring it back to the full council to consider whether we want to move forward with a request for anything. So just wanted to give you that update.
Very good. Well, we have come to the end of the regular agenda of council time, but we'll be moving into executive session. And after that 20-minute session, we'll come out to. And after that twenty minute session, we'll come out to adjourn council time then. So the executive session will have council present. It involves potential litigation authorized by RCW forty two point thirty point one ten one section I. It will be twenty minutes. Is there intended action after? No, no action after, but we will be returning at about nine fifty two for the purpose of adjourning council time today.
Madam Chair, I apologize. I thought you were going to have a councillor report of some kind regarding the discussions over funding for law enforcement. If you weren't going to do that, I I do think it's incumbent that I at least make some comments. I'm not happy about what I'm seeing in the press and the misinformation that's out there. May I have a couple of minutes to just speak to that?
We're going to back up to councillor reports. How about that? This is a bit unprecedented, but we're going to do it and then we'll come back for the discussion about executive session again. Go ahead, councillor Medvigi.
Thank you. So we can't get into the details because all of that funding request of the sheriff's office was done in executive session and all the details of that was in executive session. And the sheriff was part of that executive session when he made his proposal. So I'm not going to speak to what was discussed there or what was substantially discussed by the council. But I do need the public to know, and I I've had constituents sending lots of emails asking what's going on here. The reality is that the council fully unanimously supported a lot of the requests that the sheriff had made. And that was in progress. And the sheriff leadership was aware that their presentation was positively responded to and affected. So we're completely shocked at the then generated press release that the sheriff made as all of his requests were in progress and are in progress of being acted on. So the public needs to know, we fully support the sheriff. We we have nothing to do with his internal hiring practices, the length of time it takes to hire and do background checks, the fact that they often put out requests for laterals instead of new hires, and the fact that they have, we have fully funded, as we look back over the last six years, the staffing limits for both corrections, staff and patrol deputies. And yet, the sheriff's department has fallen behind year after year after year in hiring. So, you know, we don't, and our county manager doesn't manage that HR process the sheriff office does. Nevertheless, these are extraordinary times. We are trying to make it easier for them to get back up to speed. Nor do we have any say in what they're going to enforce and not enforce and what was the substance of that press release. That was the sheriff's separate elected office alone that promulgated that cut in service. So I I wanted to dispel this false information out there that we're not support the county, the executive branch, as well as the county council is not supporting the sheriff. We are. We do believe in law enforcement, public safety, public security is a fundamental tenant of what we do in government. And we fully intend to be partners with the sheriff's department. So thank you for giving me that a few minutes. I know while the press were asking and we weren't able to respond because of the cloak of executive session and what had been going on for the last week. But the timing of those press releases couldn't have been worse and more misleading to the public.
I must concur with what you're saying, councillor Medvigi, and I also have great concern that those continued press releases may have impact on the ability of the office to successfully recruit. And that is what is at the heart of it all. But I think that the sheriff's deputies and their staff need to be fully aware that council is in support of them and the job that they do. There was a statement that was made by the Guild, the Deputy Officers Guild, that the county and the Guild can mutually agree on collective bargaining to modify a CBA, a CBA, a collective bargaining agreement, even when it's kind of off the normal time to do so. And so last night, I responded to that by saying that, of course, the Guild and the county can mutually agree through collective bargaining to make various changes. And that's precisely what the county has been attempting to do within the financial parameters set by the council. And in fact, this past week, the county staff who are authorized to bargain, and that is not county council, have been reaching out to the Guild. And it's my understanding that the staff and the Guild have, I would add the word, there has finally been a response and there is a date set later this week for that bargaining. So know that there is that outreach by the county to the Guild and therefore to the sheriff's office so that what needs to happen will happen. But the council has been very responsive to the requests that have come from the sheriff's office, which actually are few in number until this last couple of weeks. So just be aware that the support is there and it's important to realize that this council is behind the deputy sheriffs, the staff, the people who do the work in the sheriff's office. Anybody else wish to add anything on that? Okay, we're now going to pop back down again to the executive session where we are leaving for twenty minutes for potential litigation authorized by the RCW that I cited previously. There will be council present and we will come back at ten o'clock in order to adjourn council time then. So we now move into executive session. See you over there. Bye bye.
Hello, the council has extended their executive session for ten more minutes and will be returning now at ten eleven. Thank you.
It is ten ten AM. We have completed the executive session that was scheduled for which council was present, but there is no action after. So council time for March sixteen is now adjourned.